It's now six thirty. I'd like to call the city council meeting of May twenty-second to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner?
Here.
Councilman Nestor, do we have him by phone?
Supposed to.
Oh, well, let's give him a call. I did not know that.
We were usually using your phone tone for better...
Yeah, your phone's better.
Uh, we could try it.
I got him coming.
Okay.
Hello, John, you want to participate via phone?
Yes, please.
And say you're here.
Here.
Okay.
Councilperson Thomas? Councilman Orchowski?
Here.
Mayor Mosher?
Present.
Here, we know, uh, three members present, one by phone, one absent. Councilperson Thomas and Nona Cora.
All right, thank you. Pastor Hall's not here. I'll go ahead and lead us in a short prayer. Heavenly Father, bless this group that we have here, bless the city, give us all the courage and the fortitude to go on and make this a better city. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We were a little bit slow in getting the minutes prepared. Does everybody have a chance to take a read of them and make somebody make a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of May eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please. Is there any questions? Call a roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite the public for a public comment directed to myself on agenda items only.
On this telegraph is twenty-nine Rex. Now, um, I had five questions, but I downed the one because the mayor answered the other four before we started the meeting. So the one big issue I have tonight, and I had it two weeks ago whenever you people were contemplating a SWAT team. Now, this town is very short on, they say, money. And I know there's problems where the police, the new police recruits, work here for a while and then they jump ship and they go to a higher paying municipality. But I don't think just having this opportunity to become a SWAT, um, member elite is going to keep them here. In fact, that might even make them go to another higher elite SWAT team somewhere else. I think the main problem is, all the police except for the chief don't live in Manassas. So I think they're just use the Manassas as a stepping stone. If they lived in Manassas, then they'll have more pride to stay here. Now, uh, this is the issue I got with the SWAT team. To me, it's adding bureaucracy on top of bureaucracy. And all bureaucracies bloom, they bloom and blow it up, and next year it'll be more expensive, the year after that it'll be more expensive. At the same time, you people just referred to one incident. The police chief here has been here six years and you only have one incident where you guys are trying to take a suspect out of a barricaded home. Now, I don't think we need an army or a brigade of heavily weaponized troops or police. Now, I want to know this, do we have tear gas dispense, dispense capabilities from the Manassas police? Do we have tear gas at all, chief?
We're not certified or qualified to, uh, dispense tear gas.
Okay, is it possible to get somebody in your force or yourself to become certified? That's cheaper than having a brigade of SWAT members. Because, uh, just watch the old movies, Adam Twelve. Two guys without any armaments, they take out a, uh, what do you call it? They, uh, they take out one of these, um, tear gas and the guy comes out in two seconds. So what the hell we need like twelve, eighteen people to go bring guy out? It doesn't make sense in my book. So I think you guys would invest, the police chief or whoever he picks, and get tear gas certification. That's my take on it. And on top of that, Tony never answered me last meeting.
Oh, I did, because I looked at the minutes and I did answer you, you just didn't like the answer.
What, we have money for the...
No, I said we did. It wasn't budget.
Okay, that's good. Well, we wouldn't like it. I do like it when you said you don't have it. So anyway, that's my recommendation, and I hope you guys table it. You'll be jumping into something, you know, I can see we live in a big city with ghettos and we've got people that we need to clear the streets. But all I think, to get somebody out of a house or a building, have somebody get tear gas certification. And if nobody wants to do it, sponsor me, I'll be able to shoot the tear gas.
You're going to pay for the gun that's going to dispense it?
No, but it'd be a lot cheaper than SWAT teams.
You think?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, what are you going to get? You're going to get an army of bazooka?
Thank you. Uh, is there any correspondence that's been brought to the county that needs to be brought before this?
No.
Uh, this time I'd like...
Lost John.
Just lost John. Let's try to call him back. There he is. Did we lose you? Okay, no problem. Um, this time I'd like to invite the city treasurer for his report. Excuse me, the city solicitor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you want to go first, how about it?
Which one, you want to go? Go ahead.
The solicitor's first on the agenda, I have my apologies.
Um, all right, on tonight's agenda, you will see the ordinance for the SWAT agreement. It's an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, has to be adopted by ordinance. Uh, the agreement itself is fairly straightforward. There is a five point five-six percent, uh, shared cost of all the communities in that SWAT agreement to the city. Um, and I think your chief gave a ballparked estimate of what those yearly costs were. What was that, chief?
Uh, it ranges anywhere from short answer sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay. Um, it has to be advertised because it is an ordinance, that's what's required to enter these types of agreements. Um, but it is ready to go, and if it does get approved, we'll, I'll work with Mr. Korpash to get the appropriate legal ad. Second item is a resolution for section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. That just prevents discrimination on the basis of disabilities, um, under the federal disability statutes. Um, this adopts a grievance process, it was part of the requirements for the USDA sewage project. And finally, an update on the easements regarding the sewage project, all the property owners, we have all of those. Did talk to Cleveland Cliffs last week, and they have a bit of a personnel shakeup, but it is in their legal department being reviewed. I know the engineer and myself have talked to the individuals from CSX, and every week they keep saying that our review will be done next week. Um, so if one of these weeks they'll be right. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Now, at this time, I'd like to ask the treasurer for his report.
Mayor and councilmen, citizens of Manassas, this is my report for April two thousand twenty-five. Garbage fees, current, collected in April, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Year-to-date, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Budgeted amount, four hundred thousand dollars. Garbage fees, delinquent, April, nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty cents. This includes also amount collected by Portnoy, which was three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. Year-to-date, delinquent, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. This includes fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents collected by Portnoy. Penalties and interest by, collected by Portnoy in April, fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Year-to-date, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Budget amount, two thousand five hundred. Garbage fees collected for twenty-twenty-six, April, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Year-to-date, two thousand, thirty-three dollars. Budget amount, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Total, month of April, collection was thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Year-to-date, six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Budget amount, six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes, April, we collected seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Year-to-date, one million, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Budget amount, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. City taxes collected by Portnoy in April, we received no payment. Year-to-date, thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Budget amount, a hundred thousand, or ten thousand dollars. Subtotal year-to-date collection on garbage is one million, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. It's real estate taxes. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, we received no payment this, for April. Year-to-date, forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and five cents. Budget amount, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes, delinquent city taxes, collection was one million, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Budget amount, one million, seven hundred and seventy-four, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Distribution is as follows. Year-to-date, the general fund received seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Budget amount was one million, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars and ninety cents. Depth service, year-to-date, received one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Budget amount, two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. Library received, year-to-date, twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. Budget amount, thirty thousand, thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Parks, year-to-date, received ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents. Budget amount, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. Year-to-date, distribution, one million, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Budget amount, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfers tax, received in April, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Year-to-date, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Budget amount, sixty thousand dollars. Earned income tax, April, thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Budget amount, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, forty-six dollars. Mercantile tax, April, we received one thousand, seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, or two hundred, two thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Local service tax, April, we received four thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Year-to-date, twenty-one thousand, thirty, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty, and four cents. Budget amount, seventy-two thousand dollars. Tax certification, we received one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Year-to-date, six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters, April, we received one thousand, two hundred dollars. Year-to-date, five thousand, four hundred dollars. Budget amount, twelve thousand dollars. Unsecured account, line for, line usage fee unsecured payments, we received nothing in April. Year-to-date, seventy-five dollars. Also under line usage account, line usage fees, eighty-five thousand, seventy-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Received in April, year-to-date, three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents. Total year-to-date collection, three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and six cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month of April.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call a roll. I'm going to let, uh, John, let...
Tell him to hang up.
Hang up and then we're going to let, uh, Tony call you. Can you go for it?
Hey, John, you there? Little bit, not much. Okay, you're on speaker.
Can you hear me? Testing, tested.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does somebody have the city controllers' report?
I think we're going to call the roll now. Right for that?
For accepting the treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, any, no questions, uh, call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. Now, at this time, do we have anybody that's got the city controller report that they can read?
I have a controller's report.
Okay, please do.
This is Rose Lee.
Bush? Thank you.
Controller's report for April twenty-twenty-five, bank reconciliation as of April twenty-twenty-five. Beginning bank balance as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents. The deposits, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight and seventy-one cents. Expenses, three hundred thousand, eleven dollars and six cents. Ending balance as of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five is one million, twenty-six dollars, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Outstanding checks, nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. Outstanding deposits, forty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Reconciled balance to bank statement, one million, forty-seven thou, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And that is the controller's report.
Thank you. Uh, don't believe anybody has any old business to bring forward? This week was kind of preoccupied by other things going on around town, so I don't have much to report for that. I'd like to make a motion for the first reading to, uh, motion to advertise for ordinance of participation of the city of Manassas police force within Westmoreland County SWAT team. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call a roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. Motion to approve a resolution of the city of Manassas, Westmoreland County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting and establishing a grievance procedure pursuant to section five oh four of the Rehabilit, Rehabilitation Act of nineteen-seventy-three. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. This time I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Orchowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund, amount of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the refuse account, in amount of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account, in amount of six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund, in account of six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels account, in amount of eighty, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the rec account, in amount of six hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund, in amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents from the general fund to the payroll account for payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to transfer thirty-four hundred dollars from the general account to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the monthly tax allocation for April two thousand twenty-five for the Manassas Public Library, in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to start paying back to tan note requirements in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents to CFS Bank.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
And before I have a question, I, here's the balances. Uh, American Rescue, forty-five thousand, seven thirty-six eighty. Depth service fund has seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents. Fire escrow has a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. The grant fund has a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. The healthcare fund is five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Line usage has eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Liquid fuels has two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Parks has sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents. Payroll has thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. The rec fund has two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents. The refuse account has three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. The tan note currently until which transferred has three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents. Their paving escrow is forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. And the general fund has one million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. And Mayor, I just have a question on something.
Okay.
That is, and I happened to notice it late this afternoon, I think before we even got here, uh, there was a comment, what's going on with the, the street trucks?
I think you know about as much about it as I do right now. Do you, do you have a...
The what was sent today to you?
Yes.
From Machine Overkill?
No, from, actually, it was from you.
He indicated that the, um, truck eight was repaired for, I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the diagnostic was like one seventy-five. So that's, that's being returned because there was a fuel pump that was faulty and we got a new one under warranty. So that truck is okay and back in service. Now they're going to do the same with truck eight to Machine Overkill.
Why are we taking these to Machine Overkill? And I thought we talked about this, that we would see if Barts could do it locally first. And then if he couldn't do it, then he recommended Machine Overkill.
Rodney indicated that Barts said he didn't want to do these type repairs and wanted to focus on tires with us and to take them to Machine Overkill if we could. So that was the response that Rodney gave me when I asked that.
Okay, that's not what I'm hearing.
From?
Barts.
I'm, I'd be sort of stumped on that because that's what Rodney indicated, that he told him of the reason why to take the trucks to Machine Overkill for these repairs.
All right, I'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, if we can talk about it, if there's a different answer, that's what I'd like to know that.
The other question is, I'm a little bit disturbed on the fact, there is no PO in, for this job. That's not, no, there is not. There's no PO for Machine Overkill for the job that just was done on truck eight.
Well, there was a, I, I believe there was a request for one for the diagnostic charge, and then whatever the cost was, a PO would go in for that. I'll, I'll check with you on that too in the morning, but that was, uh, the idea that I had, that that's the way that was going to work.
And there's no invoice or anything? If there was something, there's a tax thing, you don't be able to.
Let me check in the morning, but that was the way that was supposed to work. From that meeting that we had there with Rodney on the two trucks to move ahead.
We need to be very clear about something. What we have worked out, an arrangement to do things, is a PO gets put in first. And after the PO goes in, they go get an estimate. The estimate would be from Barts or Machine Overkill, and Machine Overkill has done attachments before. That's not changed for years.
And I think that happened here is what I'm saying. If it didn't, then we, we should address that and talk in the morning. They had to go to get a diagnostic look at it, so there is a charge for that, and then they would tell us what the charges were for the repair. That's the way I thought this was working and there would be a PO for that. If that makes...
But where's the PO? There's no PO. Was the work done already?
The, the work was completed today from his, and I thought there was a...
Why was it completed without a PO?
Well, let me take that back. There's an amount set for the one sixty-five to do the work. I don't know if it's been completed yet. Probably shouldn't be until we get that approved, that second part. But there had to be a diagnostic first and then a, a PO amount for the work.
Okay. There just seems to be a big disconnect, and it's a, it's a continual thing. And this, what we put together to maintain a flow so things work has been in place even with the police cars for years. I'm having a hard time, why we're having a difficult time following it.
I thought we were, is what I'm saying to you, Council.
Not if someone took the truck and I didn't... We can't be circumventing things. And that's what my concern is. I mean, I just talked to Bart last week and he said, can you get me down the trucks starting now? So he has time to work on them instead of waiting until September when the snow starts to fly.
I, I saw your comment there, but I heard the other comment that he did not want to perform those duties. He wanted to focus with tires and take the other items to Machine Overkill, because he has confidence in them.
Well, here's why that doesn't make sense. The chief has a vehicle that was up at Sea Harbors with an estimate which I didn't approve for over seven or eight thousand... The chief had a vehicle that was up at Sea Harpers with an estimate which I didn't approve for over seven or eight thousand dollars that they wanted. Okay? The chief then, we spoke, and he took it down to Bartz after I talked to Bartz, and he didn't have a problem doing it. One part alone that Sea Harper was charging for the front end of that vehicle and the- by the way, chief, it's all apart and he's fixing it right now.
Yeah, he called me earlier today.
Okay. The one part for the front end from Sea Harpers was twenty-seven hundred dollars. His cost for the same Ford part was seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. We can't let things like this happen. Wh- where did this happen on?
Between Sea Harper and-
Be- between Sea Harper and the police car. Okay. So, my question is, if Bartz can rip out a whole front end and do everything else, why wouldn't he want to do the truck and just do tires on the truck? That makes no sense to me at all.
Entirely different vehicles. We're talking a car versus a half-
Versus a truck, yes.
Oh, come on, that truck's only a five-fifty.
That's a two-ton vehicle.
It's a b- pretty big vehicle. We can clarify this definitely in the morning, but that's why we went with the diagnostic first, Machine Overkill. And then a cost would be provided for the second P.O. for work to be done. And had to be approved. So I- I would tell you, I might have been supposed- I don't think the work's been done yet.
I'm trying to bring up our P.O. system right now. And maybe there was a diagnostic, we'll see. And that would've been one of the last things that would be out there, I would take it. There's Colsons, there's Frank Godla, which we need to talk about. There's another Colsons, there's Josephs. The last one. Graphics, there's the engineers. There's Murphy, there's Widmer Stings, there's Sherwin-Williams, there's Godla, there's nurses. Machine Overkill on May eighth for a hundred and seventy dollars.
That was that. That's the diagnostic cost. Now the cost for the repair-
Yep, this is truck four.
Or four, okay. There's four and eight that are gonna be needing work. So four was the truck taken. That's the diagnostic P.O. Then there's gonna be a one-hundred and sixty-five dollar charge to put the pump in, which is under warranty, so we escape that big cost. I don't believe that work has been done 'cause a P.O. has to be put in to get approved for that. So that's where we're at with truck four. Truck eight then would go into a similar situation, a diagnostic charge, and then whatever cost, we'd have to get approved.
This is saying this is for overheating, turbo noise, and rear end.
Whatever- whatever they thought the, uh, the costs were, they delineated those for the P.O. The only work that really needed to be done was, I believe, this one-hundred and sixty-five dollar charge for- and I can clarify that in the morning, I don't have it in front.
And there's no- there's no invoice or- or no thing accompanying this on here at all?
It- now, it will be because the costs have been made aware to us, so the one-sixty-five will have to be a P.O. and be approved.
So was the one-seventy.
One-seventy was approved and it's in your package of bills.
Well, you still- that doesn't be- whether it's approved or not, it still has to show some type of estimate or something. We do that for everything.
The diagnostic is the estimate.
But there's no attached for estimate on here.
Well, the one-sixty-five today will be attached to get approved for the work done on the truck, to be done.
Well, that's after the horse left the barn.
No, the tr- I don't- I'm saying, I'm not sure it's been done, it's the cost of the work.
I- is this clear to everybody? Because I'm getting the impression that not everybody understands.
What's- I don't understand what's not clear. One-seventy is the diagnostic cost for Machine Overkill to take the truck in and look to see what's wrong. They came up with a cost for truck four of one-sixty-five, and now we have to get that approved under a P.O. to get the work done.
But that originally wasn't even approved, it wasn't done. There's- there's nothing attached to this for the one-six- one-seventy.
It's- it's in the list of bills and it's-
No, no, on the- on the P.O.
Yeah.
You have to scan in a purchase- when you do the purchase order, you're supposed to scan in an accompanying invoice estimate or whatever it is. It's no different-
We didn't have it yet, the only thing-
Then how did he know how much it was gonna be?
He- he didn't at that point. He got- the- the truck costs one-seventy to get into Machine Overkill.
So there should've been a Machine Overkill invoice for a hundred and seventy for diagnostics attached to this.
Okay, well, that- that should- but that's the cost. But it's in your P.O. system to do that.
No, it's not.
You just read it to me and you said it's one-seventy.
It's one-seventy and that was- it doesn't say what it's for. And it says it's- it says Rodney talked to the mayor and Mike and decided to take it to Machine Overkill, overheating, turbo noise, and the rear end. That's exactly what this states here.
And that- that's what hap- we- we needed to get a diagnostic look at the truck, uh, and it- the fee for that is one-seventy. So that we did and moved forward with that to find out what was wrong with it. That was all just conjecture on our guy's part and what could be done. But how we improve it? I mean, can you tell m- tell me what needs to be improved and-
But, again, that's my whole point. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel, this has been in place for years. It's not like this is a- this is something that's just popping up in everybody's head and going, ooh, we just doing this now.
What are we doing- what are we doing differently?
If you're going to take- from the beginning here, you're going to take it to Machine Overkill. You're putting in a P.O. for diagnostic work. There should be an attached invoice, thanks, sir, or estimate to this P.O. that said this is for, and that- this is for a one-seventy diagnostic only to diagnose the- whatever vehicle it is. And then whatever there is more-
And that's what it says.
No, it does not. It doesn't even come close to that. You guys need to be specific.
For the one-seventy charge, councilman, it's to get into the door to do the diagnostic. We don't know what is the problem with the truck until they do the diagnostic testing. That's the way I see that. So there's a P.O. for that. And then when they come back and they say, we looked at the truck for the one-seventy charge, here's what it costs for further repair.
And you don't have that yet, correct?
Just got that today, I understand, and I forwarded that to you guys that said, that sounded pretty good. Right, a lot less than I thought that would be, but we've gotta put the P.O. in to get that done if we decide to.
When you said you forwarded it to- who did you forward that to? I didn't get nothing. There's no email at all. All i- all your email stated was, truck eight is done, going to send truck four later. That's all your email today c- from at five-thirty this afternoon says.
And that's what-
So where's the amount that- it looks fantastic? Where's the dollar amount that you just said looks good?
It's in the email, I believe, one-sixty-five?
No, there's nothing in there.
I- I have to pull my emails up and see.
Can I pull mine up and I'll be happy to save you the time?
Please, 'cause I thought one-sixty-five was noted in there.
From you, Mike, at three-thirty this afternoon, work completed on truck eight of our fleet. Truck four will go to Machine Overkill next week. This seems reasonable, I will keep you posted.
Okay, well, they haven't then completed the work, but it is one-sixty-five, a charge, wh- which we'll put a P.O. in for. We have to, to get that paid.
Right, but you just said that you said-
Okay, I thought I put the one-sixty-five in, I guess I did not, but-
Well, I'm just being clear, I'm not trying to- I'm try- not trying to nail you to a cross, I'm trying to be-
Not nailing anybody.
I'm trying to be specific to what's supposed to have happened.
Okay, what, and I'm telling you exactly. So now we have a one-sixty-five charge that we have to decide, if we don't pay for it, then we'll go somewhere else. And if Bartz is indicating he wants to do this work, not what I heard.
All right, I'll follow up and deal with that.
I- I- I will also in the morning. Uh, I'd like to talk to you about it jointly so we can be on the same page.
Well, I appreciate that, but no disrespect to anybody, I worked during the day, I don't have the time allocated to do things like that, to be on a call. So I can't do that.
Well, I- that's why I try to help out to- to get these things moving, to help you do that, is part of, you know, not trying to hurt or be nefarious or any kind of-
I understand it, but the way this is showing to me right now is there's no invoice for the diagnostic. Truck eight was done, we have no clue how much it cost, and what- and were there a P.O. for it? And someone's already taking truck four up to Overkill next week, it wouldn't even know what's going on.
Truck eight is not even in- has not been in the shop with Machine Overkill.
It says work completed on truck eight of our-
Well, whatever it- if it's eight or four first.
Well, but you understand, I'm sitting here-
Okay.
Not understanding which one it is, I'm relying on you and everybody else to make sure they put the right information to light up.
That is right, if- if- what does it say in the memo? Which truck?
Work completed on truck eight of our fleet.
Then that was eight, that they looked at it, there's a diagnostic test, and it's one-sixty-five to repair what needs to be done.
So this says it's already been done, though?
I don't know, I just said, the amount is given to us. And what they also indicated was, we won't have to pay for the part that was necessary because it was under warranty. So now we have to put a P.O. in for one-sixty-five to get it paid.
All right, but all that other information was never disclosed to all of us. The part that- no. I- I'm gonna be very clear on this, that I'm gonna make sure this happens to the point from now on. If that's the case, and we're not having to pay for a part because it's under warranty, that's something I think council would like to know so it knows what costs are. But I don't even know, I've never heard anything like that until this last five minutes.
Because it just happened? This all just happened this afternoon.
Absolutely, and you sent your email out.
Well, yeah, but I thought that was good stuff that was happening, but we have to have a P.O. now.
I- I appreciate your good stuff, but when you don't include all the information in the good stuff, it's not good stuff. I'm sorry, it's not good stuff if you don't give all the information because we care, do you have any ID clue? No.
I mean, I- I'm finding out now.
Lois didn't have a- didn't have a clue. Okay? You've got three council people, ro- uh-
You- you have the ID- the one-seventy that you know about, Tony, that's been approved under a P.O. for a diagnostic test. The second part is the one-sixty-five that needs to be approved for any work.
Let- 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 let's-
I- I'm not gonna-
Try to wrap this up here real quick. Let me summarize real quick. There was a requisition put in and it did not have an attached, that said that the cost was gonna be a hundred and seventy dollars. And that's what you're complaining about.
That's the first part.
The same-
Second part, we get an e- email, which was great, this afternoon, it says, truck eight's completed, I didn't even know truck eight was anywhere.
Yeah.
We need to do better communication in completely of what we do and how we do it, even if it's simply to everybody, because we're not like, we have five hundred people in here and we can't send a memo out and make sure everybody gets it. There's only five of us.
Okay.
Okay.
Because then I don't get an expense that I didn't know where the heck the thing came from.
Okay, understood.
That was my one question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lois is not here. Councilman Nestor, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Karen can read Lois's report. And we do have a report.
Okay, Karen will read Lois's report.
All right, this is the- the Streets Department report for April two thousand twenty-five. Picked up garbage downtown, marked PA one calls, cold patched potholes, swept streets, cleaned catch basins, continued spring maintenance, put the weldment together, cut grass, worked on signs, helped parks department as needed, and that's the Streets report for April.
Okay.
John, you still there?
I'm here.
Do you have- do you have a- do you have a report you'd like to give, or anything you'd like to say, John?
Uh, honorable mayor, members of council, administrative staff, including the menessin. First off, is anybody able to hear me?
No, we do, because I'm not- I just have a phone.
All right, 'cause I have, uh, three months of, uh, reports to give. Um, unfortunately, back from the hospital this morning, I- I hate it. Um, you know, peanuts and shells for me, which sucks. But I do- anyway, I- I apologize, I will give my report in person, uh, next meeting, but this pain is just unbelievable, and I'm just not able to talk every- I'll go before mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Karen, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
I do.
All right, good.
Uh, this is the Parks Department report for April two thousand twenty-five. Cleaned the civic center when possible, picked up garbage and tree limbs throughout the parks, repaired leaky plumbing, mowed the parks and ball fields, turned all the water on in the parks, helped the Street Department as needed. And again, I wanna invite everybody to come out on Saturday, May twen- thirty-first, at nine o'clock at Madison Park to help with the cleanup. That's where everything will be given out. And, um, also, I have good news. Can I say some good news?
Please do.
Uh, we received this email this morning from, um, Westmoreland County Parks and Recreation. We received a fifteen hundred dollar grant for our music in the park series, which is really wonderful. And also from, um, McCray Martino from the Westmoreland County, the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County, and they also gave us an eight thousand dollar grant for our concert, which I think is wonderful and really good news. We need- now that we're having the money come in, we need plenty of volunteers. So if you would like to volunteer, please give me a call and I can put you on the list and give you an assignment, because, um, it's really great to see this coming together.
And if you'll notice, there's some, uh, there's some yard signs in front of here that talk about Billy Price to be in the first concert. Free concert for everybody. Anything else?
That is my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Does anybody know, and- or, uh, I'm not gonna make an assumption, so I'm gonna ask. There's a check here for, uh, our rental, Milos rentals. I thought that was done because this check is for June of two thousand twenty-five.
One of the things, I will talk to Bartz tomorrow and find out why- why we got the bill again, 'cause I'm pretty sure that we told him that we were done with it.
Yes.
And he even called me and asked me if I wanted to rent that myself in order to move some personal stuff over there.
Well, he wanted the extra key, did somebody take the key down to him? He needs the key before he charges us for doing walks. I believe it was taken back to them, yeah. Two keys? I have no key, so I asked whoever had a key, I believe it was Rodney, returned his. Right, Rodney returned a key, but there should've been a second key.
There's a key here. Or at least there was, I don't know if there still is.
That you had, mayor.
Yeah, it's in the key box, but-
Yes, there's the box.
But, and one of the things-
I will make sure that I just- I'll- I'll-
One of the things that doesn't make sense is, if you look on the list of bills, this isn't on the list of bills. If it's not on the list of bills, how could a check be cut?
That's- Joy, I don't- I can't answer that, Council Pam.
I'd hold it in Wise Cur in the morning, yeah, I wouldn't-
Because it's not on the list of bills.
If it's not, then it shouldn't be- have been issued, yeah.
What is that for?
Me, uh-
It's right here.
Is it?
Okay, I thought it wa- I thought I saw it on there yesterday, but if you're telling me it's not?
Nope. I already signed it.
Then it's good.
But that's pending. I was finding out if that was already closed out, what- and why we got a bill.
Yeah. To make sure it is closed out if it hasn't been, but I thought it was, I honestly did. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any item related to businesses, ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product in the attention of the city of Menneson. Give it a second. Hello?
Now, I appreciate what Tony did today. And things are gonna get real bad because everyone's gonna be trying to accumulate charges. And I- I've been catching it in my bills at home. And it's gonna get bad because the economy is bad. And you guys gotta cross your T and dot your- And you guys gotta cross your T and dot your I's, because this is get out of hand here. Now, this example is what I'm afraid of. When you guys are advocating the SWAT team and you only talk about six hundred and some dollars, then it goes up to eight hundred. You have excluded the cost of the person or the officer to get his equipment and his, um, gear. And that could be up to fifteen hundred dollars. And if these, and if this expands to two people, then you're doubling that.
There's a bigger, there's a different expense.
The thing is, in all bureaucracy, the price keeps going up and up every year. So you can't just sit there and say it's only gonna cost us this. You don't know what else is gonna be thrown at you, so you made the point, you gotta know exactly what details you're deciding to vote on. And you don't just make general statements and say we're gonna full go in. And I still believe Menneson Police is capable of doing their job. And number two, we got bell burning state cops. And number three, I think it'd be cheaper and more prestige and technology that the police should be able to have a license to shoot a tear gas. And that will solve all the problem, you don't need to wait for six hundred, six hours for fifty people to show up. So that's my, uh, take on the whole situation. And again, I'm gonna harp on this, we gotta work on getting industry here, because if we don't get industry, there's no commerce, there's no people living in Menneson that have jobs in order to pay their taxes and their rents and their mortgages and their school taxes. Now, saying that, and I'm gonna throw this back on Karen Cosner. She made two attempts to have this Donner Avenue, uh, what do you call it, booths? And people are supposed to come in, so it'd be like a bazaar, and nobody showed up. Last time, nobody showed up. And you can't build the future on low class, low employment or no employment people. We need something more sophisticated to bring in people who got money. And if you're not approaching them, it's the same as not having industry to bring about an economy. And you can't do it from the ground up with people who don't have anything. So that's my take there, and I had it in my paper twice, and it's gonna be in the next few times. And it ain't gonna do anything, because you're not offering anything. You're just saying you got all these, uh, local merchants or local, uh, tradesmen, but what does that mean, we don't know what they're selling, they selling what, watermelons, are they selling what, uh, sandals? So nobody's gonna come out of the woodwork to support something that's vague and low class, in my opinion. So that's it.
Anybody else have any comments to add to me?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, there's two other things that, I wanna mention one thing that Ernie said. I think as we made forward a motion for the SWAT team, which we all agreed, and yes, but I think everybody also, I would really like to know what the total cost is. And here's the reason I'm asking for that. I know the lower borough officer that was in here said it was around six hundred and thirty or forty dollars. Okay, to, this, this city would pay five point five percent, I believe, something like that. The other thing, the other point I'd like to make out is that we're cognizant of the fact that, Chief, do you have the answer on this one, I don't remember, I don't wanna give a wrong number. How many times were they activated last year, eleven?
Four.
Thirteen.
Require, Ernie Hush.
Trying to make a point that's even, believe it or not, it's part of your favor. The thing that, that also has to be considered is, not really is the six hundred and some dollars, the five point five percent, that's fixed cost of equipment and whatever they're doing and all that, that's one thing, that's fine. But if one of our officers is on the SWAT and he or she gets called out thirteen times, let's just take last year, right, Chief?
Yeah, it was, they had thirteen call offs.
Okay. We're paying the officer time and a half from when they get in their car to where they get to the location of the incident happening, to how long the incident is until they get back. Now, if you multiply that on an average of thirteen times, I'm just bringing this out, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm saying it's a good thing, I'm just stating a figure that this could, at the end of the year, unfortunately, end up to eight, ten thousand dollars. That's all I'm saying. Well, insurance is covered, the insurance is covered from what I've already asked our solicitor. He said they're driving their vehicle, which means they're covered by their own personal rider, and whatever their personal riders did not cover, the city would pick up for insurance. So it's, that's covered, and we've already looked into that, and Joey, you did look into that, right?
Your city clerk looked in.
Okay, so, but that's not my concern, my concern is.
And there's no additional insurance policy, this is already under.
Then it covers after the city.
What if they get injured, it's no different than they would get injured if they're working a shift on a Tuesday afternoon.
Right, that, that's not the thing, the unknown cost could be, if God forbid, there was fifteen or twenty incidents over a course of a year, it, the cost could escalate. And I'm just letting everybody understand that, that if it comes in, thank God, nothing major happens, Chief, everything's okay, you don't have to go anywhere, or this person's gone here, life is good in the world. But if something is, things get worse, if this is a fifteen, twenty calls, this could get very, very, very expensive. That's, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm not saying I'm for it. I'm saying I just think that that should, needs to be brought out and explained to everybody.
Yeah, I think that.
There will be a cost.
I think that's a worst-case cost. There's many times that an officer will be called out, he's on duty already, there will be no additional costs.
Well, if he's on duty, from what I understand, the chief, he doesn't go.
If he's on duty, he can, he is already being paid.
But he's not to go.
It, it would depend on it, after, if, if this will pass, come up with a policy and procedure for that individual officer. If there is two people on shift, obviously, that officer cannot be, this is what I'm saying right now, that officer cannot go because I have two officers in town. If there is, happen to be three people on shift, there may be a possibility that that officer can then take our car and go wherever he needs to go. That's something I need to sit down, maybe talk to Joey about, talk to the mayor about, if this passes, I'm just, you know, I don't wanna put more work into it if, you know, if I don't have to.
And does that also mean, like you said, if there's three officers on duty, one officer gets a call for it, they leave, they're not taking one of our police cars, correct?
Well, it's.
Because that's a resource that you've complained about that we don't have enough of.
If they quit, there's an extra car there. It, it all depends, a-again, that's something we have to sit down and talk about.
I, I would, I would like to lean more towards them not taking one of our cars because we don't have exactly the newest fleet in the world, that's for sure. And I wouldn't want something to go down here while they're with a vehicle somewhere on like, say, New Kensington, not accessibly easy to get back here, and now you've got a problem with something here and you don't have the cars. Because people are gonna say, you protect your own first before you do something else.
Well, and that's why it's just, um.
It, I just think, I a hundred percent agree with you, but bringing it out in the open, it's just, there's no different expectations or nothing else.
One, one good, very good thing about this is, a year from now, we can look back and say, this is what it costs us, we make the decision again whether we continue or not.
Absolutely, because we'll have a baseline to go by.
Exactly.
Right now, we don't.
That's exactly true.
And real quick, just something I would like to bring out, because I don't wanna have emails going that we're doing something that I shouldn't be doing. And that is, on the P O, on the, uh, bell letter, there's a request in which I have not approved, and I'll tell you the reason why, for the engineers for the C D B G grant money, the ten percent they do, they get.
Mm-hmm.
I have, I understand that, I have no problem with it, but what I have a problem is, one is like for twenty-five hundred dollars and one is for eight thousand, eight, eight, eight thousand dollars. Now, in my mind, if I look at both of those and say there's two of them for ten percent, that tells me one of the grants was twenty thousand, one of the grants was eighty thousand, but that's not the key. And Linda told me that, well, we pay twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and I said, what? Why are we paying, we don't pay nothing until we get something. I thought that was agreed and understood by everybody, unless I'm wrong. And what I'd like that to reflect, because I'm not approving it until it does, is that there's two things in there. If one of them says this amount of money, it states that ten percent is for this grant. And this grant for this amount of money is ten percent, that they match. There should be eighty thousand for the one grant, or twenty thousand for the other grant, whatever the figures are. I don't want, they're skewed right now, they're all over the place. They don't make sense when you read it, you have no clue of knowing what money's going to what. That's all I'm asking is to get cleared up.
That's fine, but you also have to understand that they apply for these grants, and it takes time and money to apply for these grants. And, wait, wait, let me finish. That, once the grants are awarded, they're distributed to different things. As an example, the fire department's gonna get fifty thousand dollars with the radios. The, the, uh, there's different roads, there's different projects that are going on, demolitions as an example. I think that what he's doing is he's charging us based upon the application for getting this money as opposed to what it's actually spent on.
Well, no, I wanna see exactly what it's spent on and that the grant that, that we got, whatever they're working on and we were awarded, matches the saying ten percent of what the fee we're paying them. That's what we agreed to when we did.
What we agreed to is, we had a three hundred thousand dollar grant, he isn't entitled to thirty thousand dollars.
That's fine, it's spelled out, three, or the three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant they got us, here's the ten percent that they agreed to, ten percent is thirty thousand dollars, that's perfectly fine.
And that's what we, that's what they're basing their on.
Well, they're not matching what they're billing.
It hasn't exceeded thirty thousand dollars.
I don't care what it exceeds, it's still not showing ten percent to ten percent. That's what common sense.
Well, we got, we got the full allotment of three hundred thousand dollars, he, why not just?
But it doesn't show that.
The two invoices.
They're not applying for the grant, right? This was the city's C D B G.
Correct.
Award. This is the work they're doing after you have your public hearings and decide what projects you're going to do. And they're going to execute that plan, so those totals aren't gonna be.
They're not grants then.
They are grants.
But they're not gonna match, they're not gonna match.
Until the end of the year, that number, combining all those invoices, should not be more than ten percent of three hundred and four thousand dollars or whatever it was. So there might be issues for paving, there might be the, the radios, the demolitions. They might be working on all of those parts of the plan, and those invoices are for the work they're doing to carry out those projects.
And the last thing, if you would, I've seen your request about, and we haven't discussed this, really talked about it, even I know it's in urgency, is the library. We have not talked about this, but we have a request in already for to spend money on it, which we haven't talked about. And I think we need to talk about it, because there's two realms to look at. Are we gonna spend money, whatever it takes to do repairs on everything? Or are we going to just do Band-Aid repairs right now and see what happens? But either or, I'm gonna refuse it because there's no three bids.
There is three bids.
No, there's only one, Gottlieb, for.
Those three bids, I gave the, one of the other bids to, to John Nestor the last time we talked about this, and we did talk about this once before, and, and you even looked at it, it was for sixty-five thousand dollars to replace them all.
I didn't, don't think I got a chance to really see, I might, I, there was, oh, six, oh, the sixty-four thousand.
Yeah, and then there's, there's, uh, the last one, they, they just got.
But there's, but the bids aren't apples to apples. You're talking three bids for sixty-four thousand to replace all three air conditioning units. Then you're turning around another bid that says, well, let's just do the minimal work that we possibly can do, and it's sixty-one hundred dollars. That's not a comparable thing. You needed to have the first ones for sixty-four thousand say, what's it gonna cost just to get the air conditioners running?
We asked them to, what is it gonna cost to get them repaired, running? Their solution was replace them. Gottlieb says we can fix them.
So you have one more bid.
And we got one more bid that, that's over at the library.
Where's it at?
At the lib, at the library.
Well, it's not in your request. Now, I haven't seen it.
I will get it for you.
Karen, did you see it? No, so.
Ernie, this is not Ernie, Ernie, Ernie.
So all I'm saying is, there needs to be three bids, they should be all together.
One, one of the bids, one of the companies he contacted wanted to charge us to come out here to make the, to, to do the evaluation.
That was okay, there's, there's at least probably thirty HVAC people within Denora, Monongahela, Menneson, in the surrounding areas, there's, there's a ton of people.
That's right.
So let's get a couple bids.
We've got three so far.
And the, and the only other issue that I do have with the one that you presented in there was the bid, the date on it's January ninth.
That's how long we've been working with this.
Well, we need an updated bid. I don't want somebody coming back and saying, okay, you're doing the work, but guess what? Parts and everything has gone up in the last four months, which we all know is starting to happen, and all of a sudden, the sixty-one hundred dollars turns out to be seven or eight thousand dollars.
Well, that's gonna be sixty-one hundred dollars if that's what we give the purchase order for, but.
Again, I don't want an old purchase order from four months, five months, almost five months ago. Shame on us, we don't need to do this.
Shame on us for putting it off that long, we have been talking about this for that long.
No, we, this is the first time we've ever been told that all three units are bad and they need to be replaced. I have, I'm sorry, I'll apologize if I'm wrong, but Karen, I don't remember this discussion.
I'm not sure that I knew that they needed replaced, we've been talking about repairs since last time.
There's three of them that are not working, whether you fix them or replace them, three of them are not working. One company says, okay, they're old, let's just replace them, that was sixty-four thousand dollars. Now, Gottlieb says, I've been working with this for years, I understand how they work, we can fix them for sixty-one hundred dollars, fix two of the three.
Okay, and there needs to be a third estimate.
And there's a third estimate that, I don't know what that was, but I was told it's higher. I'll get it for you. Either, either way it works, we're lucky that we've not had the summer heat very much this year so far. But it does get miserable there.
It gets very, very murky.
And we've got, that is one of our facilities, we need to take care of it.
Do we get the way we decided we're gonna do things?
Just like you know that, that Bart can do a better job at a better price for the city, I know Gottlieb can do a better job at a better price on heating and cooling for the city.
That's fine, just get, but it, we're talking a lot more money that's gonna require three bids. And we're required to do three bids. And just, all I'm saying is that the three bids are apples to apples. That's all I'm saying.
The, uh.
We need to do that.
You cannot force a company to fix something that they don't know anything about. They, their solution is to replace it, that's what their solution is. If somebody else comes down and says, you know what, I've got some used units I can put up there for two hundred bucks, then that's a different solution altogether. That's what I'm saying, oh, there is charges for estimates in a lot of cases, absolutely there is.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm done now.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, since we've had our public discussions already.
Memorial Day, and let's not forget the men and women that, uh, that served the ultimate sacrifice for our country, so, I think.
Absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.